So I didn't log in there because I'm logged in over here.
This is the staff meeting, January 14th, 2025. I want to note that this is probably the shortest staff agenda I've ever seen, and I'm very proud of that. So we'll see how we do this morning. And, you know, for the anybody that's watching, we have obviously changed the time of our meetings. It's an adjustment for everyone, but hopefully this will serve the purpose here as we start to meet at 10 o'clock on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So with that, we're going to get started, and the agenda item is the 2025 work plan. Jeff Aludo is going to make that presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. I forgot to have the introductions take place on the dais. Thank you, Commissioners. So let's start with you.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerall-Dumas, Commissioner.
Alicia Reese, Hamilton County Commissioner.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Thank you. I'm Commissioner Denise Strehouse.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. And I guess I would just say that what the agenda lacks in terms of items, I'm going to make up for in length of presentation.
That's fantastic. It's good news.
Just kidding. Just kidding. But no, I'm really actually very excited to have this particular item on the agenda today, the 2025 work plan. We've, I don't think we've ever done this where we've actually presented in advance of, I mean, I'm talking about since I've been here, since 2006. I don't think we've ever done something where we've actually given the Board a preview of work and really the public a preview of work because the Board knows exactly what we're, what we're doing, what we're going to be doing. But this is just a good opportunity to provide a high-level summary for the public as to what some of the major projects, major activities of the county are going to be over the course of this year. This doesn't actually contain anywhere close to all of the work that's going to be going on in the county. There's just no way to do that, and so we're not even going to attempt it. But it is still a lot of material, so I don't plan to spend more than a few seconds on any one item. I'm not prepared to go into a deep dive on, on any of these today. So what I would ask of the Board is if there's something that you don't see, that you just wonder about, the chances are it just, for whatever reason, just didn't get put on the list, right? But if there's something that you just want to make sure that this is on there, we can talk about that. And maybe more importantly, if there's something you see here that you would like more information on, this is a good opportunity to plan for staff meetings down the road. So if that's something you want to point out, some of these things are already ripe for staff meetings as it is, and some of them we have actually planned for, for a staff meeting. But if there's something that you want to make sure we do a deep dive on, I'm happy to do that. So Commissioners, without further ado, I'm just going to go into the presentation itself. And the first thing that I'm just going to hit on is the large capital projects. I think this is, and we mentioned this in the budget process, I don't think I recall a year where we have this much large capital working. And Commissioner, is everyone's screen working? I know Commissioner Reese's screen is not working, so I'm, or I'm happy to trade seats with you. Or I'm happy to trade seats with you if like, Commissioner, okay. Okay. Great. Thanks. So we have just a lot of large transformative capital projects that are planned for this year. I'm just going to walk through them briefly. The, our EMA nine, our new EMA 911 Center out in Springdale, Ohio, move-in is slated for December of this year. We're going to be looking to complete construction in the fall. The city of Cincinnati has already been notified that, you know, currently we have the EMA, EMA jointly consolidated with the city up at Radcliffe. So the city has been notified that, that our operations will be moving to Springdale in December. The Mercy Bond Hill construction to commence in May of '25, as the Board is aware, this would be the consolidated operations of DDS, JFS, Veteran Services Commission, Environmental Services, Public Health, Addiction Response, and CLEAR. Move-in to start by the end of the year on the initial renovations. Regional Safety Complex, Phase One, that, all the site development work of the Regional Safety Complex, which, which the Board broke ground on in, I believe, October of 2024, will be complete by, by October of '25. Phase Two is currently in design. That's all the buildings and the rest of the, of the complex to be complete by April of '26. The Hillcrest renovations, which the, the Board already approved a construction contract for back on the, on January 9th, that's the work to renovate the four cottages, the dining hall, install security fencing. That is underway, or will be underway shortly. And then we have a lot of work, probably more work since any of us have been here, on the animal shelter this year with completing due diligence on property acquisition by March. We're actually in the process now of starting the renovations on the Dane, the Dane Shelter, which would be complete by July of '25, and then also concurrently entering into design efforts on the former Record Center. So we've got a lot of, of moving around of, of the animal shelter operations over the course of the next year or so as we're completing those Dane renovations. We actually have dogs moving today over to the Record Center to be housed at the Record Center. They'll move back to Dane while we do the improvements on the, on the Record Center, and then ultimately, hopefully, down the, down the, in a couple of years, we'll be in a position where we'll actually move into a completely new shelter. So, and I will say, Commissioner, that's, as I move, as I move to the next slide, which is a lot of the smaller projects, I've listed some deadlines here. These are the deadlines as we know them today. We know these are large capital projects. We hope to, to get all these done by the date that I had mentioned, but they are large capital projects. Things do happen, but as of today's date, that is the, that's what we know. There's a lot of, plethora of smaller projects as well. So we have the Office of Reentry Expansion going on on the first floor of this building. We've got a lot of, we've got elevator replacements that are in design work at 800 Broadway, the courthouse, 230 East 9th. We have facade and roof work being planned at the courthouse. We have technology upgrades being completed over at Common Pleas Court to help with virtual hearings and the presentation of evidence and testimony. And we also have the Satellite Office up in Forest Park, which should be completed by March of, of this year as well. A lot going on in the development space as well, Commissioners. These are some of the things that maybe get some of the most headlines. But we have obviously the work going on in the Convention District, the Duke Energy Convention Center, that, and there's a picture of it there in terms of the work that's ongoing. It's about 20% complete at this point in time. It is still on time, on budget for a 1-126 opening. We have work that we're going to be doing on the Bengals lease and Paycor renovations early here in 2025. We have a facility condition assessment that we're going to be doing at Great American Ballpark to start to set the stage for the future needs of that stadium as well. There is an arena conversation going on in this community right now. The, the county has not expressed any formal policy direction on that, but there is a discussion going on. So the, the county will obviously be having a discussion about whether and how the county plugs into that discussion at the broader community level. We have more internally, we've got a digital permitting project and planning and development that's ongoing. This is a really exciting project to make sure that builders and developers out in the community don't always just have to come in to, to give permits and applications. A lot of stuff can be done in the field. Approvals can be done in the field so that the, the day-to-day routine economic development work that happens in this community will happen in a, in a faster, more customer-friendly manner. We have work going on in the banks this year, an urban design study for the remaining lots at the banks, as well as bidding out a, an end use for Lot 24. And we have by, by spring, summer of '25, we should have the opening of the tenant build-out complete and the opening of a lot of the retail entities down at the Findlay Market Garage, including the throwing axes, the, the axe-throwing and bar restaurant establishment. We have the collective art store and Roebling Books. All three of those leases have been executed and will be, should be opening by summer of this year. I am actually going to turn it over briefly here to Lisa, Assistant Administrator Lisa Webb, who is going to walk through some of the social programming that we have coming up in '25, because there is a lot of it, and some of this registers as some of the most impactful work in the community. I know something that, that the Board has their spotlight on continually. So Lisa, you want to walk us through the social work?
Social programming coming up this year. The 513 relief bus will officially launch in March of 2025. We're looking on the plan for that right now with several marquee events and increased focus on providing health services in the community. The Tax Labor Review Committee has no pending ballot issues that this year, but that unfortunately for them does not mean that they get a break. There are a total of five midpoint reviews that are going to be reviewed this year. They are already at work on the Children's Services Review. That should be coming very quickly, then followed by the.
Lisa, I'm sorry. Could you check and see, is your mic, is there a button for your mic there, or if?
I'm sorry. It's on now.
It's on now. Okay. Sorry, I was just getting waved from the back.
Oh, sorry. The five, I'll just very quickly, the 513 relief bus is launching in March of 2025 with marquee events and a stronger focus on, or increased focus on healthcare in the community. A Tax Labor Review Committee has no ballot issues for the levies this year, but five midpoint reviews. The Children's Services Review is underway right now and should be coming very quickly in the coming weeks, as well as the Developmental Disabilities Annual Review and three midpoint reviews. It's the Mental Health Levy, the Indigent Care Levy, and the Senior Services Levy. In addition, we are also working on the, or JFS is working on the Children's Services Prevention Grant recommendation to be coming shortly, as well as establishing an MOU with CMHA to secure 50 housing vouchers for transition-age youth as they are moving out of the JFS system. Reentry operations are continuing in 2025. We are, will continue the implementation of the Office of Family Voice. The One Ohio Local Funding Grant Process, that's the county dollars, as well in partnership with the City of Cincinnati Funding as well, just launched. The applications for that from providers are due February 14th. There is a total of almost $4 million in funding in this grant round for that. And the county is also working in coordination with CDF on a review and report for the Tiny Homes Assessment, and that should be due around mid-June.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Some administrative budget finance work that will take up a lot of the agenda this year. One is that we are. year. One is that we are looking this year to go back to some regular meetings with our board and elected offices as it relates to budget coordination. The, the board executed and passed a, a balanced budget for 2025, but it was a budget, as the board is aware, was difficult to balance, and was difficult to balance in large part due to the constrained revenue environment that we find ourselves entering into at a time when a community demand by the community for programming has not relented. So there is a bit of a conflict between the, the demands of the community, the demand for programming, and the revenue to support those, those demands. So the idea here is to get back into a mode of meeting regularly with all of the board departments and elected offices to keep people continually apprised of the budget situation, so that as we get into the budget process, it's not a surprise when we're asking departments to pull back or for restraint in certain areas, or sometimes even for, for deeper levels of participation, which we've had, which we faced in the past. It just makes those conversations easier. Anson Turley is here today, and we do have on the, the calendar for February 24th, the Legislative Delegation Meeting, which we do every year. I want to thank Anson for scheduling that far in advance of anything I ever did. So appreciate his, his proactive look to that important meeting. On an annual basis, we do, is something we started several years ago, where every year we try to put a certain process or processes through a continuous improvement effort. This year, we're going to be focused on many of our HR processes, as well as parking, where we're going to be taking those particular operations through a rigorous continuous improvement study to look at everything from efficiency of the process to customer service, et cetera. We have a debt, a debt issuance planned for the reimbursement of the JFS contribution to Mercy. That'll happen later on this year. We'll, of course, continue to give the board regular updates on, on revenues at all levels. We'll continue to look at our, at the sustainability of our restricted funds. This is something that was mentioned in the budget process as well, that we have the general fund, but we also have dozens and dozens of restricted funds out there that are important in their own right, that manage certain operation, that are responsible for funding operations of, of certain areas of the county. Two of the largest, most notable are the transient occupancy tax and our parking fund. These are, been, these have been strained over the years by various forces, COVID, not, not the least of which is COVID. They are starting to recover, but we need to keep our, our finger on the scale here and make sure that we are monitoring those for sustainability. And also, as a part of the budget, we have identifying options for future funding for affordable housing. Affordable housing, the board has made one of the more transformative investments that any local government has made in this region in affordable housing through ARPA. And, but that, those dollars will be gone at some point here. And so we want to look at some sustainable options for funding affordable housing work in, in the community. We also have a lot of work going on in human resources. We have a, our risk management office is, is in the process of assessing the effectiveness and the cost of our overall insurance coverage. We have five collective bargaining agreements set to expire in December of this year, so we'll be doing some negotiating work this year, as well as some other work within HR that's more of the employee-focused and proactive work of, of the HR organization, including continued implementation of, of our employee resource groups, which was something we implemented very recently to help employees in this community. We, we're trying our best to continue to be an employer of choice here in Hamilton County and make sure that people find Hamilton County as a place that they not only can come to work, but they want to come to work at Hamilton County. And part of that relates to giving employees the opportunity to bring their entire self to work. So we have these employee resources groups. For instance, we've got groups focused on people of color, women, employees with disabilities, LGBTQ, and others, as they get recommended. These are not things that we say we're going to do this group. These are things that, that, that bubble up from the employees, that they want to form a group, and that there's someone, an employee who is willing to take responsibility for managing that. So we'll continue that work this year. HR will continue the work helping departments plan for succession down the road, as, as we have a lot of great expertise in the county. That expertise leaves occasionally. Many times through retirement, other times because folks find different opportunities, and we need to continue to make sure that the employees in, in these departments are trained and prepared for those advancement opportunities when they, when they come. We are also moving forward with, in the, the board is very aware that in the past, we have done direct programming with the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center on inclusion training for a lot of the staff of the county. We've worked with the Freedom Center on the implementation of a electronic platform that can be implemented more into the DNA of our, of our organization and be something that employees can access routinely. A lot of technology improvements, Commissioners, that are, that are going to be happening this year. Our website migration to improve the unified look and branding of the county. We're hoping to launch that fully by March. We have the courts migrating to Office 365 out of their current operating environment. New fingerprint information system, which the board approved through a contract very recently. This will allow for quicker matching of fingerprints through the sheriff's office. We are migrating to the cloud for a lot of the, the work that we do under the Board of County Commissioners and Administration, which will help us, among other things, make sure that we can more seamlessly share work and do remote work with, through our employees, as well as finalizing the move to the .gov domain as well. Under public safety, we're looking to finalize the service contracts for a Western and Northwest District early this year. The board received a presentation late last year on the sheriff's, some of their intelligence-led and real-time crime information systems and some technology improvements that the board approved through a contract. We're going to continue to work with the sheriff's office to support those efforts. I know in talking to the chief deputy, that there are, that there's, there will be some opportunities in the very near future for the board to visit the Sheriff's Real-Time Crime Center out on Harrison Avenue to get a more in-depth view as to what the sheriff's office is doing there. We have the Care Pod for Men that opened on January 6th, and we're also working with Juvenile Court to reactivate Hillcrest in a financially sustainable manner, and to potentially partner with the state through a community correctional facility opportunity that I know Juvenile Court submitted a proposal on in early January. We have a lot of environmental work that we'll be doing. We will be, continue to advance our Phase 2B negotiations with the federal regulators, while also continuing to implement consent decree projects over that time. It's not written here, but I know, because it's so timely on the agenda, the board had late last year asked for a staff meeting early in 2025 on the impervious surface fee. So that will be something that we bring forward to the board here shortly. The Environmental Services is also participating in a 16-county MSA comprehensive climate action plan for the greater Cincinnati region. It's a federally-funded initiative that Environmental Services is involved in. That's looking, we're looking for milestones there in, in summer of 2025, as well as a more granular county sustainability plan by the fourth quarter of '25. Finally, Commissioners, I just wrapped up with some important dates and milestones. I won't read through all of these, but obviously, we've got a lot of grants that are going out. Early on this year, our, our large tourism event grants going out, our small event grants. We have Small Business Day scheduled for May 12th. We have Veterans Appreciation Day scheduled in, in May. We have, we know there will be a Walk of Fame ceremony in the summer of 2025. We're still working to figure out the exact date there. We've got a Shared Service Summit that we're going to be working through our planning office, date to be determined there. But a lot, I just wanted to, and we'll continue to fill this out as we go through the year, but a, a lot of events that I know directly relate to some of the programming that the board is, is implementing. So I just wanted to highlight some of those. Commissioners, I tried to walk through this as quickly as I can. I want to thank Lisa for her input on the social services. Holly and John Brugan, Anson, Frank Spataro are also here if there's any specific questions, but happy to answer any questions or get feedback from the board.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Thanks for everybody for being here as, by way of resource, in case there are questions about it. This is a pretty comprehensive look at what we have been doing, what we will be doing, and I really appreciate, I think this is a really good exercise for the beginning of the year to kind of level set, you know, where we're headed as a county, and the volume of projects is impressive, particularly on the capital side, and really also on the programming side. It's just, it's just really great. So, so thank you. And I, I feel, especially as you walk through that last page, some, each and, each of our offices is represented in this report. You can see, you know, the, some of the events, some of the programming. So thank you for highlighting all of that. I just have a couple of things, and then I'll, I'll move to the Vice President and Commissioner Reese. So I, we have tried to figure out a way to bring information to the commission by way of staff meetings for the coming year. So I just want to put that out there, that we are open to providing staff meeting time for whatever anybody thinks is worthy of the time. I think there are plenty of things on this list that would be worthy of having a staff meeting to give us more information, more in-depth information about. One that sticks out in particular to me is related to the animal shelter. There are a lot of moving parts here, and we've got buildings coming online, going offline, coming online again, and we've got a long-term project. It's, it's very confusing for the public to try to figure out what we're doing here. And I, I get a lot of calls, and I think others do as well, related to animal care in the community. And so if we could do a staff meeting within the next month or so, related to what facilities are coming online, how we're responding to the needs. I know there's been an increase also in animals going into shelter, and they've had a lot of success in getting adoptions also going out of shelter. So I think a report from animal cares, from, you know, our staff trying to better illuminate what's happening here might be helpful, because people are concerned about this aspect of what the county does. But open, of course, to staff meetings. We've already gotten some feedback and some ideas, and we're starting, starting to schedule that, but certainly open to suggestions from others, especially including the board members. I, I also am interested in the, the budget meetings. We used to do this a while back. This kind of, Commissioner Portun, when he was here, wanted to do quarterly budget meetings. If, as people will recall, we were, he wanted to do quarterly budgets, which is really problematic if you're conducting, you know, budget surveys that frequently. It can be challenging. And so we settled on doing quarterly meetings related to budgets. We've kind of fallen off a little bit from that, but it was really helpful in having department heads and other elected officials all sit together to talk budget, because it level sets the conversation. And I, I feel as though we would not have a $50 million gap related to revenue versus what was requested if people had, had a better understanding of what revenues were available. And so I think those meetings could go a long way in helping those that are making those requests better understand what's available to them, what the other organizations are asking for. Like, the sheriff gets to hear about, you know, what the clerk of courts is doing, and then the judges are doing, you know, and so it's this great exercise where there's shared information, and so a common understanding then of what, you know, the budget will look like moving forward. So I'm very interested in those. I, I assume the county commissioners will be invited to those. Perhaps we have them at Memorial Hall to provide enough space, but I think it's, it's great to resurrect those. I think they were tremendously helpful in the past. And then also, I feel similarly about the Shared Services Summit for all 49 jurisdictions to not only weigh in on what they're doing, but also learn about what opportunities are available to them by way of the county and each other. We just got that report about shared fire services. Thank you for that report. That's an example of the county not necessarily offering that service, but rather these communities coming together to provide some efficiencies amongst themselves related to what they're doing in response to fire. And then lastly, the affordable housing piece. I, I, this commission has been very committed to providing affordable housing in the community. We designated, as you said, a lot of money to that through ARPA, but now we need to figure out or not whether or not we can find an ongoing funding source for affordable housing in the county. And so I'm very interested in how that is going to play out and what we might come up with related to that. So that's all I have. Thanks again for the report. Thanks to the staff for working on this. And Commissioner Dumas, I'm going to turn it to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff, for the presentation and for your staff and the vast array of projects that you presented. I really like the method of presentation. I saw this on our agenda on the website, but I didn't see the packet. So because of that, I do have some questions. It would be great if we could get this ahead of time.
Yeah, and with that, Commissioner, I apologize for that. This was something that we really decided very late in the process it would be good to do. So this is not something we routinely would like to make a habit of, but we didn't have the presentation done until this morning. So I, I do really apologize for that, because ideally, we would have liked to have posted it earlier for your, for your review.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And it just shows the expansion of this board and where we want to go. So I'm probably going to go page by page, but not very long. So there's a lot, as you said, a, a lot of expansion that the board has asked for, specifically on that first page with large capital projects, the Hillcrest renovations. We decided as a board, even though we had to close Hillcrest down for certain reasons, that it was a priority of ours, that youth needed a special place to go. And because of that, we're going back into Hillcrest, and I think that's awesome. As we look at the animal shelter, real estate, and capital improvements, the previous vendor that we had for about 55 years was not giving the county and the board the information we needed. So we went on to Cincinnati Animal Care. They've been doing a great job, but we also realize it's just not enough space for those animals. So I'm really glad that we're improving and buying land to meet that need. And then the 911 and EMA new facility, it's not only new, but it's the first one that combined 911 and EMA, and that's innovative for us. And I think it makes a lot of sense to, to do that. And then the Mercy Bond Hill renovation, staff and residents needed better access and a higher quality of life for the staff that are working there and the people and parents that come in to receive services. I think it's a, a great idea, and I supported it from the beginning. The Regional Safety Complex, we know we've been talking a lot about that for over 77 years. That area in Evendale at the back of Lincoln Heights has been just the worst as far as quality of life, and the fact that we finally broke ground on that, I'm just really excited about. Smaller facility projects, I didn't have any input on that. Under development, we said GABP Facility Condition Assessment. I was just wondering, are we going to do, to do the assessment? Are the Cincinnati Reds going to provide the assessment?
Thanks, Commissioner. Great question. So that would be a, an assessment that the county would do. The, the Reds themselves are investing in a, in a study of some other opportunities within the stadium that relate more to the revenue environment of the stadium, that type of thing. So they're going to be investing heavily into that side, whereas we will, would be investing into the study of the, the nuts and bolts of the stadium, if you will. That said, we will make sure that the RFP that goes out for that ensures that the board will have input opportunity on some of those other more forward-facing improvements as, as well. But the, but there, but most of the, the work will be on the, the nuts and bolts of the, of the bones of the stadium, if you will.
Very good. Thank you. And I really want to applaud the Cincinnati Reds, because oftentimes I have found that they do some of their own renovations without even coming to the county for our help, and they just, they just do it. And I certainly appreciate that. Under social programming, their first point, 513 Relief Bus launches, really, it never stopped, really. I mean, I know you're regrouping and looking, so it might be good just to say relaunches or something. So whoever's reading it doesn't think that So whoever's reading that doesn't think that, that it ever stopped because it really didn't. And then under implement office of family voice, we're really continuing the implementation. It's not like it was sitting and doing nothing. And then under One Ohio, and I think Lisa might have seen that I wrote a note though. So under the One Ohio Local Funding Grant Process, this is our second launch, right? Okay, so I just wrote down second. And then the tiny homes assessment in partnership with CDF. From what I heard, it's, they're going to bring an assessment mid-June and that's unacceptable. We've been talking about that. I've been talking about it. I know we gave them the charge of doing a, assessment. I'm not understanding why it's going to take six months from now and it's unacceptable. Do you care that it's unacceptable?
Uh, uh, do I, I'm sorry. What was that last?
I said, do you care that it's unacceptable? I said that.
Of, of course, but I will absolutely get some information back to the board in terms of the timeline, the schedule.
Yeah.
And to, to give you a little bit more information on why that date has been chosen and if there's some things that the board would like to say, well, we don't need this, that, or the other, we can take a look at an alternative. But I just, we want to make sure that we do this right and that the, and that the board has a comprehensive look on, on how to proceed with this.
That's great. And even if we could do a midpoint assessment, like we found the land or whatever, something maybe in three months, that would be fantastic. And I think I'm going on to the Administrative Budget Finance. I thank Anson for setting that up. I had mentioned, I think since I've been here, the legislative agenda, these legislators come for about an hour, if you really look at it. And I'm wondering if we can start for next year, obviously we can't do it this year, and I mentioned it in some emails, to have them stay a little longer. I mean, it's like they're sort of doing us a favor by coming. I think we, and they rush in, rush out. It used to be we had, one of them had to go out for smoke, but they're not here anymore. But can they stay an hour and a half? I'm just asking for maybe just another, because we rushed through. And I don't think, I mean, they work for us, they work for the people and I'm glad that they're coming, but I would like to extend the time if they know far enough ahead on I think it was one other thing I had. Hold on one second. Oh, one, important dates and milestones under BYI, that comes under the JFS, so there's really no necessity to put that on there because it is always continuing, so no problem with that. BYI, under important dates and milestones, we had Inspire, but that's through JFS. So I believe that's, oh, it was one, as we look under Social Services, I did not, unless I missed it, see anything about food and how we're going to work with the free store more to make sure that our people have the food that they need. Lisa, is, are we doing any expansion in that area?
I don't have anything specific on that to share right now, but I will go back and look. I will say, in talking about food and the bus, the bus just did it, had a request from the library very late last week, went out on Monday to the downtown library to provide hats, gloves, other warming information with partnerships with the community. And we work with Food for the Soul. They provided 100 la, 100 lunches to individuals there. I stopped by about two hours in and there were no lunches left. Those are all going out into the community, but I'll follow up with additional with free store as well.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Great. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. And thank you, Jeff, for the presentation of a synopsis of the projects. And I think it shows the diversification and the complexity of diverse issues that we're trying to address as a Board of County Commissioners. It also answers a question that I know I get a lot of times and maybe others do as well. What do county commissioners do? I've served on city council, I've served at state house, but this is the one job that everybody said, what does a county commissioners do? And so one of the things I'm very committed to is educating folks on what we do, how we do it. And each, you know, I'm still learning more and more every day as we look into Ohio Revised Code, what we, what we choose to do versus what legally we're supposed to be doing. And as you can see, we have a diversity of things, whether it's development, whether it's social services, whether it's being the safety net of this county, how to sustain and maintain, but also how to move forward. Housing, all those kinds of things, senior citizens, veterans, all of that, we have, our hands are touching, whether it's helping municipalities in their redevelopment and aging infrastructure that we're investing in, whether it's the courts, whether it's the sheriff's office, safety. There's so many things that the county, we touch and we spread very thin in trying to move this county forward and being a major player in the region. So I think what's been presented today has been very good considering we've come out of a global pandemic. And the story will be written about who made it out of the global pandemic. What, what counties made it out? What counties survived and what counties moved forward? And so I know that my focus is moving to a futuristic approach, but also maintaining those who stuck it out with us here in Hamilton County, who didn't leave the county, who, who invested here, who worked here, who's retiring here, who's, is in their families here. And then also making sure that it is affordable. We have not cost ourselves out of residents because obviously when we cost ourselves out of residents, it brings less revenue and less revenue gives us less opportunity to reinvest. So I want to thank you for that. I do have some questions. I know that this is a brief analysis because if you touched every single thing that the county is doing, has done, and the board has voted on, we would probably be here for at least a week. And that would be the Cliff Notes version. So I know that we were just hitting some of the 80,000-foot level. With that being said, I wanted to hit on a few things that I had some questions and wanted some clarifications. One I'm going to start with, affordable housing, of you, as you've indicated, it is no small task that we had the opportunity to decide where to put the American Rescue Dollars, which we'll never see probably ever again in our lifetime. And we said we need to invest it in affordable housing and we've done about $50 million in the ARPA money to date. That does not include the HUD money that we've been doing. We have helped projects move forward that were stalled and never could get off the ground because we came in with the gap money through CDF and said, let's get moving on a right-now affordable housing program. And then we invested in long-term and some specialized housing. So I have two questions. One is, I had asked for an interactive map and maybe we have it, but if we do, I'd like to maybe have it at one of our meetings, maybe showing how it works so that we could get our hands around the money that we've invested. What has it led to? How many units? Where are the units? And then have it where the average citizen could go on through technology and hit a button, they can get it on their smartphone under housing and know what we did as Hamilton County. I know we had been working on it, but I think it would make us unique. It would also help us, we would, like one time we voted, I think it was 40 million and two weeks later a person came and spoke for two minutes and said, you guys got to do something about affordable housing. Well, that showed that there was a disconnect and it would be great if we could have them go to, like we, the portal that was created, 513 Relief was a, a great tool. We've had over 200,000 people utilize it, but if we had that for housing or connected with housing, it would, it would work. And if we had that, I'd like to have it reflected in the affordable housing category.
So Commissioner, we do have a, a baseline of that that includes all of our economic development activities. We'll have to check to see if it's updated with affordable housing. That's something it should have in it just by the nature of, of how important housing is to the economic development ecosystem. So we'll check, it may be, I'm just not sure. We'll check on that though, and if not, we'll get it updated with that and get it out for the board to review.
Okay, thanks. I think it should be pull it, pulled out and highlighted. It's something I have been asking for, I think, since 2021 when I got here. And you may have it, but we need to have it out. It needs to be pulled out and maybe even a short demonstration, you know, at our, one of our meetings, it could be the main meeting or what have you, but a short demonstration and then referring people with a unique possible URL or button that they can hit so that, and it constantly updates and people can go and they can follow. Okay, the disability housing is over here. Oh, you guys invested over here. And I think those are important, which brings me to my second question. I think a dis, the disability homes is something that we also invested in, is something that's near and dear to me and I know I push for that as well. We've got a good partnership with LAD. It actually happened. I don't think they're built yet. However, I think it needs to be reflected on here, under the housing. You named some of the housing, but can we just also have, when you say what's going to be coming on board, we funded it, it should be coming on board probably 2025.
Yes.
The completed.
And, yeah, and I can, we can, we can find out the exact completion date of it and get that to the, to the board and we can just update the information with that.
Okay, because I think that's a major accomplishment. People with disabilities is the number one minority group. My next thing, under development, you've listed a number of things. You've got the Convention Center District, Bengals Lease, Great American Ballpark Condition Assessment, Arena District, Arena Discussion. You're going to transition to digital permitting, urban design study at the banks. You mentioned RFP, Lot 2024, and then the retail openings at the Finley Market Garage. What I saw that was missing was a hotel. Is that still on, the Convention Hotel? Because I haven't heard anything about that. And that's something that you can't get conventions unless you have a convention hotel.
Yeah, no, good, good question, great question, Commissioner. And sorry for that oversight, we just wrapped it up into Convention District. I probably should have just mentioned it in, in the report itself. But the headquarter hotel activity is absolutely still going on. I know they're out of schematic design, they're into design development now. There, we're still in the process of closing that gap, that financing gap, but I know everyone is very positive about getting it done to the point that I think there is even some environmental work that's going to start. No groundbreaking or anything like that, but just some environmental investigation work that's going to happen out there on the site, et cetera, by, over the next couple of weeks probably. So yes, they are absolutely moving forward on it. We do owe the commissioners a more formal report out on this, probably within the first couple of months of, of the year prior to the board getting a, a development agreement coming as, as is responsibility of 3CDC and the, and the developer to bring that to the board. So yes, absolutely sorry for the oversight and not hitting it, but it, the work is absolutely continuing.
Yeah, I would like it reflected. Hotel is a difference since we're mentioning an arena. One of the things I think is very important, to mention, there are a lot of wants and a lot of needs and some major, these projects are multi-hundreds of millions, getting into the billions. And on one hand, we've got that. And then on the other hand, we're saying we need to have budget discussions every quarter to show that we don't have the revenue coming in or whatever the revenue is. I think that needs to be a balance and communicated to the entities who feel as though, I've got a great idea, is a billion dollars, let me run down to the county and invite you to a discussion because we need to be clear on what we, what we have available. I would like to see as a, a tactic that we use, and many people are using it right now in their own homes. When your budget is getting smaller, you now have to stretch. You must leverage. Many people used to say the old anecdote, trying to make a dollar out of 15 cents, which we should do, I'd like to see a plan of how we leverage because we have limited dollars. So a lot of the one-offs, we do a lot of one-off projects. Somebody come down and say, we want to do this, it's a one-off. Where we do the stadiums, there's two stadiums, it's a one-off. We say arena, it's a one-off. We are like the American household right now. We don't have the money to keep doing one-offs. We've got to now see how do we, how do we leverage this to leverage that and stretch those dollars? And so I would like to see more of a plan of not all of these, under development, there's a lot of one-offs that don't help the other. If we're doing the Reds stadium, it's by itself, Great American Ballpark. We're doing the Bengals, we only looking at the, I don't know if it's Paycor, Paycheck, whatever it's called, we looking at just that. If we doing Lot 24, you over here with just Lot 24. And now we holler an arena and it's by itself. How do we leverage the dollars that we're spending to stretch it, to get a better deal for the taxpayers? That's something that I'd like to have considered. Let's put them all on the board and say, here's what we can do and then here's how we leverage it. If we're going to do a G A B facility, I know we got Facility Condition Assessment, I'm not saying where the arena or how we're going to do it, but there is an arena right next to it, maybe 10 steps. Do, does the assessment need to include that whole area? What do we do with that area? To me, those are the things that I would like to put on the particular table. The other thing is, on RFP on Lot 24, maybe I missed it. What is the RFP saying?
So Lot 24, Commissioners, Commissioners is the lot that has the infrastructure already built. So if you go by, if you go down Freedom Way and you look to your left as you go towards Paycor, it's the, the lot that has the parking infrastructure already built. There's podiums coming up out of it, there's just nothing happening there. We actually did, right before COVID, we received, we put out an RFP and we received bids on that to develop that site. So this would just be a reissuing of that RFP to get development proposals on the site so we can move forward with something finally on that site to bring some revenue in as opposed to it sitting vacant as a, as a parking lot.
Okay. Now is, I know that's the one across from Belgian Waffle, am I correct?
Correct.
Is that a joint ownership with the city or is it just us?
Yes, it is joint, yes.
Okay. And then is this a joint RFP or how, are we in charge?
Well, we would be issuing it, but we would be getting feedback from the city on the development of that RFP, yes.
Yeah, I wasn't here.
Yeah, this is, this is actually different now because if you remember, the, these things used to flow through what was called the Joint Bank Steering Committee. That group doesn't really exist anymore, so this is kind of a new way of just doing it just with the county and the city and not through a third-party entity like the JBSC was.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I wasn't here before COVID. So I just like to know what that RFP is, what we're, what we're looking for, how we're doing.
Sure, we can get the board to some of that, yeah.
That would help update me on where we are. The other thing is the parking contracts. I know I had asked maybe a year ago, we have several parking contracts. And I always had, had a question of, some of those contracts wasn't necessary, in my opinion. We have contracts where we get percentages of our parking. And I know that one was, you know, in the Bengals Lease, so they get 98% on game days and then Reds, they get, I can't remember their percentage. But then there were some other ones, Heritage Bank and, and if you were out in the community and you put your business in a community, you very seldom get a piece of the parking. It's, I remember, you know, when you go out to the community business district, you very seldom get a piece of the parking. And I just feel like some of that revenue we're giving away that could maybe be reinvested in other things and more development. So I would like to get, again, those contracts, and I saw that some of them don't have end dates. You know, we need to see who is negotiating these parking contracts. these parking contracts? Why are we negotiating them? And is it necessary for everybody? And we give it to some, but we don't give it to all. Freedom Center's on the banks, but they don't get a piece of, they could barely get a parking space. When I, when they had asked, could they get two parking spaces? We said we couldn't do it. But we have others that we're giving away almost everything. And, and on the big days when they have events, the days they don't have events, the place, the thing is sitting empty. So, yeah, you can get 100% of nothing. So, I just wanted to see, should we be relooking at those, should they, everything should have a deadline, an expiration date, so that we can reevaluate. But I wanted to put that on the table as we're looking at these different things that we're going to be, you know, these are the different things that we're going to be doing for development. I think we shouldn't be giving away the parking. We should be selling the parking. Like you said, that's the way we pay bonds back and those kinds of things. So, I wanted to look, I wanted to have that on, on the table. I think those were my main things. There's a lot of things, a lot of good things in here. I would like to see some dates that we could put out on, you know, when we're going to open up the 911 or EMA facility.
Final opening date.
Yeah, when we're going to get the Satellite Office, those kinds of things, so that people can begin to put those on their calendars.
Sure.
Because those are some big things and very good news. So, so that's what I have. I'm excited to do a deeper dive on, on these things as, as they come about. But those are some of the things that I, I saw that I'd like to make sure that we are including as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, there is something that comes to mind, and there are a bunch of, and I've been taking notes about potential staff meetings for deeper dives on things that both Commissioners have mentioned. And Jeff, you actually mentioned one, which is the Headquarter Hotel, so all, all on the list. But it, it occurs to me, with all these capital projects coming online within the next year or two, I would appreciate an opportunity to do a tour of those facilities. And so, in, in doing that, of course, have the other Commissioners participate if available. And we can all do our own tours, but it might be nice to try to coordinate something, and also invite community members in from Springdale or, you know, from wherever these are, to make sure that they're in the loop as we continue to proceed. So, I don't know that we need to do it at the very end, but rather, maybe before the very end, before the ribbon cuttings to...
So, I'm, I'm clear. Are we talking about kind of finished product tour or construction tours?
That's right. Well, let's take 911 EMA, for instance. So, this is a big project that's coming on. People are very excited about it. It might be nice, a couple of months out, to say, hey, we're, it's, it's safe to go through. There's not a major construction going on. But let us take a look at it and see, because I think all of us know how important the technology is there, the, the nature of the space for people that are under stress when they're coming to do their work. And so, I think it would be interesting to take a tour of that. Yeah, we, we can do it after it's finally finished, but I think because we're involved in this work and funding it, that it might be helpful for us to have a tour prior.
It's like what we did with the crime lab, when that was, when there were opportunities for the construction. So, yeah, happy to facilitate.
Just, just want to put that on the radar, because I, I see a whole bunch of opportunities here. So, when it's appropriate, maybe we can get a, a tour, whether it's hard hat or not, to get kind of a preview of, of what's happening out at some of these projects. Okay?
Yeah. I forgot one of my most important points. We do have a Bengals lease coming up, and I want to put on the table, I know we have executive sessions and those kinds of things. But one of the things that I heard when I was running, a lot of people were concerned about this, I would like to have an ongoing, so it's not all of our meetings behind closed doors, or they're finding out about it in the newspaper, and then we've got to, because they're doing some things. And we, you know, then we got to run back and, and revisit it. I had asked for a work piece, a work product that could be presented to our board that would be on, so everybody can go with us every step of the way. So, I do want to put that back on the table, so everyone knows it's in front of the curtain and not behind the curtain. And they, the people get to follow, because they're the ones who have to pay for it in the end. So, I do want to put that. I'd asked before that something could be presented to us, timed, in a work schedule that could be public, and the people can follow with us. So, thank you for that. I forgot, I had it written down at the top, and I didn't read it. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, that is our under, only agenda item. It was quite, it was comprehensive, Jeff. So, thank you for that, and thanks for, you know, all, all the work and putting this together. We've got a lot on our plate in the upcoming year or two. So, thanks for putting it in front of us as a reminder. All right. Is there anything else to come before the board? I'm going to enter, well, I'm going to make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summeradumis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.